Yeah. Same Saturday. Uh, I guess, yes, we gotta do it. Yeah. Yeah. It's not quite as big. It's called, it's called River, but yeah, like, driven. It's huge. Yeah. 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 The Gardener City Council has come to order if the police can't, I pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have two proclamations this evening. First is one that we do every year since Gardner has become a tree city. It is a, it's something that we have worked for. Yes. Join me, sir. Here. Largely responsible for making sure that we maintain this, as we say, I know your, your team certainly is. Obviously, trees are an important part of our environment, which, in the standpoint of helping keep the air clean, providing shade, and certainly providing beauty for the landscape. And in an area where, you know, we've moved from agriculture to residential, we've had a whole lot of change from an urban forest perspective. So, some years ago, we decided to become a tree city, and as part of that, we proclaim April 27th every year as Arbor Day. So, whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton, a voter who proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture, did a special day he set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by letting water cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, using this paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual, we now therefore be resolved, that I, David Seidert, Mayor of the City of Gardner, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 27th, 2012, as Arbor Day in the City of Gardner, Kansas.
Very good.
And you have news for us, I guess?
Certainly. There's our plaque for Tree City USA Award. As the mayor indicated, it's our ninth Tree City USA Award, nine years in a row, actually. So, very proud of that. And Parks and Recreation Department and their staff has worked very hard on many of the young trees we have, considering some of our more mature trees as well. So, it's been very good. On Saturday, April 28th, on the Gardner Greenway in Wynwood Park, as I mentioned, as well, we'll celebrate both Arbor Day and Earth Day. We'll do a, a spring cleanup, if you will, at the Gardner Greenway, celebrate Earth Day, and then we'll have a picnic in Wynwood Park. And at that time, one of our staff members will do a tree planting demonstration, which has been attended, and go over some developments, caring for a tree and planting a tree. So, they're very welcome over the years, and so we're looking forward to that, planning for that right then.
That's good. I encourage everyone, can attend to attend, it's a fun time. I know Chris and his crew are there every year, something I've been going to for a long time. And it's a fun, fun afternoon. It's fun to watch the kids get excited and muddy as they go about cleaning up the greenway from winter's debris. So, it's a good event, so, and there's always hot dogs and chips and, you know, a can of pop, so, they're welcome on 28th.
28th.
Very good. Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, sir.
You have another proclamation. This for National Crime Victims Rights Weeks. This is a, something that I think is very important, it's something that obviously is in the news on a regular basis, but, you know, we hear about the crime, and then we, we have the initial concern for the victims, but then, as time goes on, that, that seems to fade and is replaced by other news and, and we forget about these things. So, I think it is important that we remember. So, whereas 18.7 million Americans are directly harmed by crime each year, and each crime affects many more family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers, and whereas the physical, emotional, and financial impact of crime falls on people of all ages and abilities and of all economic, racial, and social backgrounds, and whereas today thousands of victims assistance programs provide help and support to child victims of violence and sexual abuse, stalking victims, survivors of homicide victims, victims of drunk driving crashes, and victims of domestic dating and sexual violence and other crimes, and whereas the City of Gardner, Kansas is joining forces with victim service programs, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout the state of Kansas and the United States of America to raise awareness of victims' rights and observe National Victims Crime Week. National Victims, National Crime Victims Rights Weeks. Now therefore be resolved, that I, David Seidert, Mayor of the City of Gardner, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 22nd to 28th, 2012, as National Crime Victims Rights Week, and reaffirm the City of Gardner's commitment to respect and enforce victims' rights and address their needs and express our appreciation for those victims and crime survivors who have turned personal tragedy into a motivating force to improve our response to victims of crime and build a more just community. So, that is a, if something is a tragedy, we hope that we all avoid, but we certainly can empathize with those who have been victimized by crime. We do have time allotted on the agenda for anyone who wishes to speak on an item that does not appear on the agenda, or an item that is on the agenda and not part of a public That being the case, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a council member who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Number four, please.
How would the council like to proceed with items one through three?
We approve consent items one through three.
Second?
Motion Harrison, second tomorrow. Can we approve consent items one through three? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consent item number four, consider authorizing the purchase of three police cars from Landmark Dodge.
How many miles around these cars?
Well, the, the unit number 899, which is a 1997, it's got 107,249. Unit 926, at the time this was written, had 91,650. And unit 927, at the time this was written, was 92,010 miles.
And are they giving us trouble?
No, under the, under the normal maintenance, you know, or the vehicle maintenance replacement, we go three years or 100,000 miles, is what we do on police cars, primarily because, unlike other vehicles for the city, these are run 24 hours a day. And they're not, we're used for eight hours and go back. They, we replace them so we don't get into that expensive maintenance and stuff on them as they go on.
But we haven't had any problems with somebody getting in a car and not running their...
No, none of these.
Any others?
No, usually we try to keep ours to work, and when somebody calls, we can get there.
A acquaintance, I guess I should say, who works as a police officer at Leewood, said they, they don't even look at changing their cars until 110,000 miles. And here we have two cars that aren't even at the 100,000 number. How do you, how do you...
That's the replacement schedule that the city has set up for us. I mean, that's what it's been for, I don't know how many ages, or how long it's been that way, but it's, that's how we usually guide when we replace our vehicles.
Has anyone done any studies since then, since this was put into effect, to see if cars are lasting longer and...
No.
It's likely, any council agree, think that would be...
How many extra cars do you have per shift?
As far as we mean...
That are in use. Do you have any, if something breaks down, are there any that are in repair?
We usually, I, I don't know, I don't have the exact number of cars I have right now, but with four to five cars on the street, I have maybe one or two extra that if one breaks down, we can get somebody back in service. I mean, it's not like we have old parking lots sitting there full of cars.
It was in the council action form that the budget included the replacement of four patrol units.
Mm-hmm.
However, there's only need to replace three currently.
Correct.
The, the one that doesn't need to be replaced, is it similar in age, or, or was the mileage just...
Mileage wasn't even close to these, that's why. I mean, these were up good and to where by the time that we get these things ordered, excuse me, five to six months to get them in, sometimes they're gonna be up to 100,000 miles plus. I mean, that's why, right now, they're not at that mileage, but by the time the new cars come in, chances are they're gonna be right at the 100,000 mile, excuse me, 100,000 mile mark. But we didn't have a fourth car that was close to gonna be that mileage, so we didn't ask for it.
And to Councilman Fotovich's question, I, how long has the repla, the current replacement policy been in place?
I don't know.
You don't know?
Three days.
Yes.
But we look at them over here, and as, as Jim noted, we are not replacing one of them because it didn't need to be up, but at the time we did the budget last year, we estimated that it would. So, we are looking at them as they come up for replacement and considering mileage and wear and tear. And these are different than the rest of our fleet. We definitely look at our other fleet with a much more elongated replacement schedule. We do this, this way so that we don't end up with all of the vehicles in replacement in one year. We try to keep them spread out so the budget stays somewhat consistent. Otherwise, what's happening in a lot of our other areas is because we've deferred maintenance and we're getting to the point that the useful life is far beyond gone, is that we're starting to stack up capital outlay on, on vehicles because we've shoved and shoved and shoved. And so, really, deviating from this is not gonna necessarily help us because that means next year, instead of the two that we currently have in 13, we could have four or five that we'd need to replace, so...
Unless you lengthen the entire cycle.
That's assuming they're still functioning well. And, I mean, they're your emergency response vehicles.
I understand, and insurance policy, that you can't insure against every risk, and if we've never had one fail, how do we know we're even taking them close to the, the point at which they will? I mean, wouldn't we...
We never said we didn't have one fail.
I'm sorry?
We never said we didn't have one fail.
You never had one fail, and the, you know, when you need it, and the...
On these ones that he's referring to, but we've had others fail.
In what, what circumstances? I mean, just controlling the area, going out on a high, high speed pursuit?
Well, we've had engines blow, we've had transmissions blow. I mean, cars are cars, they're gonna break, and it doesn't take a high-speed pursuit to do that. I mean, we've had cars that we've purchased, brand-new cars, that have been to the shop under warranty, but they were limits. I mean, they just, they, we got a bad car. And unfortunately, when that, you know, warranty wore out, we, you know, continued putting money into it until it was time to replace it. So, that's why we got on this retention schedule and got to where we're just cycling them out, but, you know, we've had cars fail.
And it's not just about failure. It's about diminishing returns on, when you do have something at that mileage, you're going to have a higher likelihood of a major replacement of something, and then the expense is more than the cost of replacing the fleet in a regular pattern.
So, what are these cars worth then?
Well, the council action form, they're...
I mean, the ones that you're, you're getting rid of, what, what will you get for them?
Says right there.
Says right there on the front plaque, or...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just on the 899 car, what kept it in the fleet through 170,000 miles?
That was an unmarked car...
Okay.
That we used for some undercover work, and then used that for officers going to school, as opposed to paying them mileage, going back and forth to some of the schools.
Through the budget that was reviewed and passed last summer by the council, is, were these numbers part of that budget, or was there a budget established and these came in and comparatively...
No.
So, these exact numbers off the unmarked bid were part of the budget process?
Those were part of the budget, yeah.
Okay.
What would you do with the money if you had it to use somewhere else and didn't buy cars with it?
I don't know. You're asking me a question right off the top of the head here that, you know, that's something that...
I mean, you have other needs, I would assume, than this.
I'm not gonna say, I, you know, with all due respect, I'm not gonna say respectfully what I'm gonna do with that kind of money right now. My responsibility, what I like to see is these vehicles replaced so that I make sure the mileageers have good equipment that I know is gonna get them to call when somebody calls for help.
As a counsel, we wanted to look at the retention policy and do a comparison, say, when would that time be? Would that be during the upcoming budget process to see how we compare next to Leewood, to Olay Van Noble and Park? So, next year, we have these questions answered rather than on the floor, to make sure our policy's in check with other communities and we're not ahead of gate.
I can tell you off the top of my head that our policy is in check with most other communities, especially on emergency vehicles. 100,000 is almost the outside limit, certainly on ambulances that I'm most familiar with. When they got to that point, we either replaced the chassis or the entire vehicle. It's just, it's a matter of economics that when you get to that age and you have to start replacing major components, the cost of that adds up to be more than the adequate replacement of the fleet in a timely fashion. It's just more cost-effective, it's more reliable, you cannot have a failure on an emergency call. You cannot. That's just the way it is.
So, how would council like to proceed?
I knew that we authorized the purchase of three 2012 Dodge Charger six-cylinder police units from Landmark Dodge. It cost 56,968 in apse of fees, plus additional expenditures for painting, striping, and equipment replacement, as noted.
Motion Brockman, second, Harrison, that we authorize purchase of three 2012 Dodge Charger six-cylinder police units from Landmark Dodge, cost 56,968, plus fees and additional expenditures. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. New business item number one, consider authorizing the interim city administrator to execute contract with Dale Brothers for the demolition of the old Navy and City Water Treatment Plants.
There are two treatment plants down below the Gardner Lake Dam. One is called the City Plant, it's been out of service since the late 1990s. The second one is called the Navy Plant, which was built as part of the Naval Air Station project. We stopped using it in 2005 because we were unable to meet current standards for treatment. Both are secured, they're boarded, they're within a fenced area, however, they do constitute an attractive nuisance in an area that's somewhat isolated. We have 90,000 budgeted in this year's budget for the demolition of both buildings. We advertised a bid in the Gardner News and on the city website. Received six bids on April 3rd. The low bid was submitted by Dale Brothers in the amount of $58,600. Dale Brothers has worked for other area municipalities, were able to check with, one of their references was Elbrom Park, and they did give them a good reference for building demolition. We would recommend award to Dale Brothers.
It was, um, over, I guess it's been seven years now since those plants have been non-functional. Has there been incidents, safety incidents, police reports that have occurred out there? Has that pushed this place? Or are we in a position, I mean, I know you don't like to keep putting it off, but if there's no incidents and there's no true safety measures and it's really preventative, then maybe these expenses are a better place than where else?
I recall, I do not, can't recall if we've had any...
Yes, we have. Yes. The reason that it got, they all got buttoned down so much is we had people breaking in looking for chemicals. Those chemicals at the time could have been used to make meth, and Captain Moore might know a little bit about this, but if someone were to fall in one of the pits, which are not covered or secure, and get hurt out there, we do have a pretty big liability on our hands because the likelihood someone would see or hear what's happening. This is the first time we've been able to get it in the budget, and I would certainly, it's a one-time expense, it's not an ongoing or recurring expense, I would certainly look at getting rid of the risk issue that you have out there and, and getting it off the books once and for all, so...
Captain Moore, from your perspective, is the fencing and the signage out there adequate, I mean, to make folks know abundantly clear that they aren't welcome on the property and they should stay away for their own safety?
Well, you can say it's abundantly clear, but it's only as good as what it is. I mean, you can come over the fence, like in that, what they did last time, last couple times I remember going out there, hearing of the reports, they just went over the fence. And if they wanna get in, they're gonna get in. I mean, you know, short of putting electric fence and, you know, razor wire on it, I don't know how you're gonna keep them out, but, yeah, they just went over the fence, they went in the building, and as Melissa said, you know, unfortunately, there's people that are after chemicals and everything else nowadays, and it, to me, it was a, it was a hazard.
That property backs right into the park, doesn't it?
Yes.
It does.
I did have a question regarding the demolition. Did they inspect and, and does this include any asbestos mitigation, any of those types of...
We inspected it, did not see anything that was probable asbestos, however, as part of the contract, the contractor will be required to do an asbestos inspection prior to demolition. Should we encounter it, then we'll have to make adjustments at that point. But based on our inspection, there really isn't any structures that are probable asbestos, ductwork, insulation, there's no insulation that would lead itself to asbestos.
And then the other question I had, that, since the Navy Plant was a WPA project, is there any historical significance to anything out there? Black's or anything that we want to retain?
Nothing left of it, it's not, I personally had thought about, is there any use of it, but it's just, it's basically just too hard on. And once again, with the clarifiers and the open pits, it's just a, needs to go.
Okay, how would council like to proceed?
I mean, we authorize the interim city administrator to execute a contract with Dale Brothers for demolition of the Navy and City Water Treatment Plants in an amount not $6,058,000.
Second?
Motion Harrison, second tomorrow, that we authorize the interim city administrator to execute a contract for demolition of the Navy and City Water Treatment Plants. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business item number two, consider authorizing the interim city administrator to execute agreement with Medical Lodges Gardner for the installation of a sanitary sewer line grinder at the small Bull Creek lift station. David?
There are two plant, two lift stations at the Bull Creek site. One's the large one that went online in 2008. There's a smaller lift station that predates the other lift station, that picks up a very small drainage area west of the plant, or former plant site. We're unable to abandon this and take it directly into the large lift station because of the depth of, of the line entering it. The main, roughly half the flow is, comes from the Medical Lodges. When it was built, they were required to put in a bar screen to catch large objects coming down their sewer line. It's been, it's been a maintenance problem. Unfortunately, it hasn't been effective, and the Medical Lodges folks haven't been very diligent or have had difficulties in maintaining it, therefore, we've had numerous blockages of the Smith Station. On average, we're looking at about twice a month, we'll have to go out, if we're lucky, we reverse the pumps, the towel or whatever's caught will reverse and eventually flow out. Sometimes we have to pull the pumps. It's been ongoing discussion with the management of Medical Lodges since I've been here. This last summer, started talking to them, and said, look, how about participating in the cost of a grinder? That way, the whole issue's taken care of, we eliminate our maintenance problem, you eliminate your maintenance problem. We were able to demonstrate to them that the materials were coming from Medical Lodges, convinced them that they're the only customer on the line that would be discharging this type of materials. Agreed to pay 48% of the cost, which was based on the flow coming from Medical Lodges versus the entire area to the lift station. The estimated cost of the work is around 16,200. It's based on roughly $12,000 for a grinder pump, and about $4,000 for a manhole structure to put the pump in. As we've gone through it, we're able to actually look at a point farther upstream from the lift station, closer to the park site, better access, plus it's got a transformer that can provide power to this device, be installed by city staff. Approved, the Medical Lodges would contribute 48% up to a maximum of 7680 for projects. The city would proceed with procurement and installation of the grinder. Happy to answer any questions.
Dave, if we've deemed that they're 100% solely responsible for it, why are they only paying 48%?
Because there are others, the chance of other material coming down the line, you know, they could continue to try and maintain their bar screen. All of our major plants have grinders, it's in our interest to go ahead and install a grinder to protect this lift station. So, based on the drainage area and the ratio of flow, we feel this is a reasonable, reasonable arrangement, plus it does help us from a maintenance angle.
But if they weren't in the line, we wouldn't have to install them?
If they weren't in the line, we wouldn't have as many maintenance problems, but it still would be advisable to have a grinder pump.
How many times have you made, have you done maintenance on it in the last, you know, since 2009?
I think...
That weren't related to, not blocks?
Well, we, we do routine maintenance, but as far as blockages, it's been about every, every two weeks.
Right, but that's, that was due to, oh, they're, that was due to their, their sewage, right?
Right.
So, I mean, how many times, beyond that, 60 times in three years?
Well, we, we have a routine maintenance schedule that we follow, but this would be above and beyond.
Why don't we require them to put the right screen in so we can test, see whether we needed a grinder pump at all, anyway?
The, we have done that, we have worked on that for the last decade. Once again, it's on private property, it requires us to inspect it regularly. As I said, we've gone out, sometimes we find the screen either missing or chained where it was functional. So, it's a case of, do we want to put in a device to take care of it, or play policeman and constantly be checking in this manhole?
Is there a legal action we can take to keep them, to make them do the right thing? Do...
Well, it, we have to provide them with sewer service because we've given them a hookup, and it's very difficult to identify in all cases that the material that's blocking it is coming from Medical Lodges. is coming from Medical Lodges. I know I talked to Jim when we tried to work this agreement out, and if you could really identify a hundred percent of the problem, you know, at Medical Lodges, we could probably put more pressure on them to do something, but my understanding is it's, it's not easy for us to pinpoint the entire problem at Medical Lodges. And Medical Lodges has been here for many, many, many years, so.
Does that affect the business? That'd be really difficult?
I think, yes, it would be. I mean, you know, granted, we can almost say this towel came from you, but, you know, there's always a case, well, what about something else?
That's right, that's right. Where else, what other businesses have the, you know, the size to flush or get rid of a towel? I mean, it can't be the residents, right?
Well.
I mean, I would think it would stop up farther up the line, and.
One would think, you know, I, you know, they, all sorts of stuff, you know, the folks will flush clothing articles, and towels have made their way down, and antiseptic wipes will make their way down the line.
I don't see anything in the council action form that talks about this being a 2012 budget item, is it an item that was meant, that was included in the 2012 budget?
No, this is something we would, basically, our share would be about eight thousand dollars. It's kind of maintenance-type thing we can absorb, it's the kind of thing our budget, though it may not specifically identify, we can, we absorb and we do upon a maintenance basis.
We allocate dollars to maintenance, this will come out of this dollar allocation.
With the eliminate, with the elimination of most of the breakdown maintenance, how long would it take for the manpower costs to pay for the, this installation of the grinder?
So, I'm going to have to defer to Jim.
Don't have an exact figure, but it wouldn't take very long, it wouldn't be more than a few years.
And the life on, on one of these grinders might be?
At least ten years, and it could be as long as twenty, it depends on the particular grinder and, you know, what maintenance you do on the grinder.
Case in point, we have a large, much larger, more durable type grinder up at the Kiltree Web, we had to replace it about two years ago, only because a piece of PVC pipe came down the line and basically jammed and locked it up. I mean, these things grind up wood, clothing, and they're pretty figures, and that thing runs twenty-four seven.
The, is the need the result of a changeover from a plant to a pump? In other words, we went from the plant to the lift station, when it was a plant, we were able to catch the debris in the treatment process?
No, this, this has always been a bottleneck, the large lift station we have has a grinder upstream of it, so everything that comes through that path goes through the grinder. This actually is pumped up ahead of the grinder, so anything that gets through this particular pump will go through the grinder before it hits the, the pumps on the large lift station. It's just that some of the larger material will jam these pumps.
Jim, I have a question for you. If the city were to say, or the council were to sit here and say, we really don't think we should be on the hook for fifty-two percent of this, and we're prepared to, you know, fight for that, and they're like, okay, let's go, let's line our, both helping us one another, what do you think the odds are the cost to actually take that to task in the court system would go past our eighty-two hundred? I know you can't really say yes or no, but do you think there's an odds of reaching that number pretty quickly, that eighty-two hundred dollars to?
Number one, you can't shut them off, not a facility like Medical Lodge.
Right, but, I mean.
So, the only option would be to file some type of civil action if they wouldn't cooperate. You, you just can't get into court, less than about five thousand dollars, just to get pleadings on file, respond to their pleadings, and you did, the problem with litigation is, it's like a train going down the track, you're not in total control of it, once it starts down the track, you don't know how far they're going to fight it, and you could end up spending twenty-five thousand dollars fighting over eight thousand.
So that eighty-five hundred dollars would soak up very quickly. The other question I had is if we can remove the provision the way it's listed here, where they are up to a maximum of seventy-six hundred and eighty dollars, they're forty-eight percent, because in my view, it's forty-eight percent of whatever the total ends up being, if this goes overrun and it ends up costing us eighteen thousand, three hundred dollars, the city's on the hook for a bigger percentage under the wording here, can we remove that wording where their responsibility is to forty-eight percent regardless of what the total ends up being?
I'd say if that's the council's interest, what I'd ask you to do is continue this until the next meeting, we go back to Medical Lodge and report back to you.
Do you have any idea how we arrived at the seventy-six eighty number, you know, if you look at it on the, on the page, without explanation, it seems very.
You know, it's just based on the percentage of the calculated flow of what they're generating versus what the entire service area going into the pump is. So it's a, an engineering calculation based on the flow potential.
Fifty-two percent of the flow comes from other areas of forty-eight percent?
Right.
Yeah.
How many other grinder, or grinders are there in the city?
All our major lift stations have them, East Lift Station has one, South Lift Station has one, North Lift Station has one, Bull Creek Lift Station has one.
But those are the large ones?
Yes.
And this one is not a large?
It would be best to have them on all lift stations, however, this is the one that has the most problems. Most of the ones are just simple residential areas, you're just not getting the full flow.
You know, the thing is, I mean, the council action form says that it's, I mean, basically sixty times in the last three years, that, well, actually until 2011, it's two and a half years, due to plugging from towels and fibrous material discharged from Medical Lodges. I mean, that's, I don't see anywhere else where anyone else, I mean, you can find any indication that anyone else is responsible for, especially if you know that the screen is not the correct screen for it. I mean, how much does a screen cost? I mean, we could just offer to buy them a screen and install it, but.
No, that's an option.
What, what do they go?
Or else, just we can go back and say, look, the council's chosen not to do this, and we want you to install a screen, we'll be watching you on a daily basis.
You think we should do that?
Do we have twenty-four access, hour access to check on that, or what if a blockage happens?
Well, I don't have the staff to be chasing these people.
Well, absolutely, sure.
And, you know, yeah, I guess we could walk up there, I mean, I've actually been there, looked at it a few years ago, I mean, I certainly wouldn't recommend that we, at least our staff time, looking at their bar screen here today.
Does the installation of this grinder provide us any other benefits? So, with that Medical Lodge side, having a grinder at this particular site, is there any other benefits long-term on the maintenance of the other equipment?
There is, well, that's why we install them at the major lift stations, unfortunately, we have a lot of these smaller ones around, I mean, if you could have, if it was affordable, it'd be good insurance policy at every lift station. However, a lot of ours are just these very small, quote-unquote, temporary lift stations, so they were not installed. But yeah, if you have a permanent installation, which this one is not going to go away, it's good business.
One last question I had, do we have a mechanism in place, I mean, I know we couldn't go back very directly, but there's a blockage, we go down there, find out it's all Medical Lodge stuff that's creating the blockage, do we have a system that we can invoice them for the time and the downtime to recover any of the costs associated with that? Whether or not we build them thus far, but going forward, if we say replace your grate right now, and if a blockage comes up, it's full of your towels, there's going to be an invoiced cost due to the blockage of that and the downtime that we experienced and the extra man-hours that had to go into fixing that?
So that's a possibility.
All due respect, I think that's really what we've done here, I mean, to find a customer that's willing to pay up to half, because they realize that they're probably a significant portion of this problem, I think is a great deal. We have to, as Mr. Hubbard said, we have to provide this service. The realization that if we get some debris and it happens to be a gym sock from somebody else, they have evidence that it's not entirely them. This is a small amount of money that we are ended up having to pay with consideration of all the other things that we spend money on, and, and every dollar's important, I'm not discounting that, but the realization that we have a customer that's willing to pay up to half to make this situation right, so we don't have further problems, further man-hours dealing with a plugged sewer, seems to me a pretty good deal.
You know, at times, though, that, I understand that the dollar part of it is small when we compare it even to the other things that are today's agenda, but I, I don't know that I'm the only one here that says we're, we're paying fifty-two percent for ninety percent of their problem, I understand, maybe ten percent trickles from somewhere else, so, you know, if you say they're willing to pay fifty percent, I think they're getting a great deal by only having to. Now, still, if it's going to cost us too much money to chase it down the road, then that's the one thing to measure, and if the downtime costs us more than that over three years, then that's something to measure else. So it might equal itself out, but principle alone, we're paying to fix their problem, is the way I see it, but sometimes that's the way that you have to move forward to make sure it's the most efficient way for everyone to move along. But that's the problem, so I've had, and why I've got listed fifteen questions on an eight thousand dollar budget. You know, the other thing that I just might add to this, is that this is an ongoing problem, 2009, 2010, through 2011, we were talking to the Medical Lodge people in July of 2011. I, I guess I would have, not knowing whether or not we were going to be able to get them to agree to pay for any of the replacement, I mean, the, the purchase and installation costs, you know, I think that this is probably something that should have been, instead of included in maintenance, included as a line item on the 2012 budget.
That's all this 2020, right?
Yes, I, hey, I understand, you know, and yeah, no, I definitely.
From the, from the standpoint of discussion, you know, we talked about policy issues earlier on the last item, is this something that council wants to pursue from a standpoint of policy that says, if then, and we do it, we submit a, submit an invoice and then fight the collection? Okay, you know, I don't know what we can do for existing, for existing customers, what we do when we bring on new, new clients, I mean, when you think about this, think about the application, and think about what's, you know, potential future, the likelihood of growth in nursing and retirement homes is high, and if that's, you know, if that's a factor, if it's, you know, if it's related to either staff or residents, you know, just toss it because it's an easy thing to do, you know, is that a, is that a policy requirement that that type of facility must have a grinder installed if one is not there? I don't know, that.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that.
I think they're astounded at what you're suggesting there, but, you know, these are, these are people that have been here for a nice long while, aside from this, best I can tell, good corporate citizens, and, and yeah, I.
You know, I guess.
I suppose we could table it and, and, and bring it back, saying, hey, you need to pay forty-eight percent even if it goes over, but.
But by the time we add in staff time to do, to do that, are we really seeing any kind of problems out of that?
Which was the point I was getting to.
I, I think there's another point to be made here, and I think it's about precedent. This is not going to be the only place this happens in the sewer system, and if we have a precedent, that we have a customer who is perceived to be, if not provable, but very likely, the major contributor to the problem, we can go to other customers and ask them to do the same thing. And we may not get the same kind of response, because there's going to be large customers that have plenty of lawyers that are going to say, try, try to recover from it. The fact that we've established a precedent, that we've gotten a customer voluntarily to pay up to almost half of a problem that they likely are mostly responsible for, I think that's a good precedent for the community. That says we can go after, at least ask, large companies who perhaps are likely cloggers of the system, and it could be grease too, I mean, there's, there's situations at New Century, when I remember building a package plant out there, same kind of thing, we knew where most of it was coming from. The county paid the entire cost of that plant because we provide sewer service. That's the business they're in, we wanted the business out there, they came, and we processed their sewage, even though it's a higher cost per company, if you will, than, than the normal flow from a normal business that doesn't process foods and grease and things of that nature. So I think it's a good precedent for the city that says we have on, on record, a, a company that's willing to pay for part of the problem that they have likely created.
Dave, how big is the screen we're talking about? And how big is the pipe?
It's a standard discharge pipe, we're talking, coming out of there, it's about this, you know, six-inch pipe, sort of a standard.
Six-inch screen.
And the screen itself is in a, is in a manhole-type structure, that's, screens probably yay-by-yay, put on a slope, you know, they have to come out periodically clean it, and sometimes it, stuff gets through, sometimes it doesn't. So it's not, it's not a huge screen, no, it's just, it's in effect, the system's been ineffective over the last decade. Granted, you know, folks have been, my staff has been talking to these people over the last decade, this has been something that's been talked about since I got here.
You know, I was at a chamber function at Medical Lodges last, I don't remember if it was last summer or last fall, but, I mean, at that point, Tom was talking with the director there, I think he was making noise about not wanting to pay anything. I mean, was that the case, or?
Yeah, it wasn't.
We got, we got them to.
Yes.
No, it was basically, they're saying, well, are you sure it's not Meadowbrook? And I said, well, Meadowbrook doesn't go through this line.
Right.
You're, you're the one going through the line, and here it is.
And Jim was saying, we're going to recoup this dust in two or three years, pissed off of not having the service, and the life of the equipment's going to be spent in twenty years.
It's not our cost, though, that's the problem, it says right here, fifty times in the last two and a half years.
In which case, I think that.
The time that we spend out there is our cost.
It should be, they, they should be held accountable, I mean.
We cannot bill customers, once we charge them their hookup fee and their monthly rates or whatever they pay, that's what they pay for the system, including maintenance.
Why don't we put a screen in right before the, the lift station?
Well, but it's basically.
Then we maintain the screen.
Yeah, I mean, we've had lift stations with baskets.
If the screen backs up, they will know exactly who's producing the sewage that's backing it up, won't they?
You don't want to go there, we've had basket catchers on other lift stations, and you don't want to deal with this one.
Why not?
Well, I mean, all I have to do is, is just think about it.
Well, don't let me go with that.
Well, I mean, that's the vigilance notwithstanding, but, you know, I mean, anytime you deal with this, there's, there's risk to personnel from infection and everything else, I mean, you know, I look at it from the standpoint of where in the business is producing, for processing sewer, and.
It produces, yeah. It's a lot more than others.
The, you know, the cost of improvement to the system, and the cost of bettering the system is generally on the shoulders of the provider, and then the, those costs are either taken to the bottom line as efficiency to the savings, or, you know, as part of doing business, we can assess as part of the general fee, and that's just what you do when your business sticks. You know, I, I think that, I'm okay with moving forward with this, I'm okay with moving forward with this tonight. I would say that the mayor's suggestion about a policy regarding, you know, installation of a grinder if one is not currently in place, or facilities that are likely to, to provide waste that's going to fog screens, that that should be something that we look at going forward.
But yeah, I, billing people and trying to recoup it and spending costs on attorneys and, and, you know, it adds up a lot quicker than the eight thousand dollars that we're going to spend on, on this improvement.
I move we authorize the interim city administrator to execute an agreement with Medical Lodge Gardner for the installation of a sanitary sewer line grinder at the small Bull Creek lift station for the agreement with Medical Lodge.
Motion, Robson and Second, Harrison. Motion, Brockman, Second, Harrison, that we authorize the interim city administrator to execute an agreement with Medical Lodge's Gardner for the installation of sanitary sewer line grinder. All favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is council update. You should have before you a budget schedule?
Right, this is just an FYI. This is the dates we're looking at for vetting the 2013 budget. We will come to you with a kind of preliminary discussion of the three major funds, which is water, wastewater, and the general fund at the May 14th work session. We did that last year and it's kind of give you a background on how we're going to be port-acting our revenues so that you understand for what the basis of the budget is built on before we actually start diving into the, the meat and potatoes of it in June. So please look at these dates, if there's any major conflicts with your personal schedules with these, let Laura know, I guess at this point. I'm starting to try and pull back out of stuff, let Laura know, and we can make some adjustments if we need to. We do have a publication date that we have to be mind-gloved and that is noted as July 23rd, so that's where we start running into some trouble with making sure that we have proper notice to the public for the budget to get to the county on time. So thoughts or comments? I know you haven't had a chance to look at it, but if you do, just go ahead and get ahold of Laura or, well, or Mike. Whoever wants, wants to take your email, we should be able to work through this and note it's not a big deal. So, but it's the same standard lineup that we did last year and giving time for discussion as needed, so.
When, apparently the first conversations we'll be having in, in session will be June 11. When does the big doorstop, when are we going to get that delivered?
That you won't receive until probably the week before, so I'm speaking on something that I won't be working on. So I'm sorry about that, but I'm going to help get the budget finished internally and we're going to start staff reviews of the budget next week and then the push to put the document together will start henceforth thereafter. But as far as timing is concerned, hopefully in May, mid to late May. But we have to button down our hatches internally first and we're not even started, so, as far as upper level review. Yes.
Make your part.
Well, I know last year, and I know we have projected budgets for, for future years, are we, do we have any idea whether or not we're anticipating a, a shortfall or?
We don't have any of the summary information rolled up. We know how we finished out 2011 and we have, and we are going to have our estimates for '12, but we aren't anywhere near talking about '13 to '18. And we will talk about those as part of the process. But internally, the departments have been working on their budgets, but Laura and I haven't looked at any of their 13 or 12 estimate 13 forward yet, so.
Till next week.
Till next week. So we don't start our internal processes till then.
Staff, anything else? Council, questions for staff?
I have one question. What will be the hiring process for Melissa's position? Is that something that we're going to wait for the new administrator to be a part of? And just an update where we are in that process to start to get a timeline in place and thought process rolling on that.
Okay. With respect to the assistant's position, you know, I think that's something that we as, as the council should talk about from the standpoint of how we want to approach it. And right now it is assistant city administrator and community development. Whenever there is a changeover with a significant position, I mean, it's wise to step back, take a look at it and think about realignment if that's, if that's required. You know, I think the first order of business to lead to is city administrator. We are at a point where we're already, committee's ready to interview finalists and, and go from there. You know, I guess this is a good opportunity to, to ask, you know, from your perspective as a council as a whole, you know, the committee has a clear candidate. Do you want the committee to bring that forward or do you want to bring back the finalists and have everybody review all of them? This is a question.
I think there should be a review before a single finalist is placed, at least of what the qualifications are that led to that decision. Even if it's carrying down the finalist to a final three, I don't know how many finals you've identified, but bringing it just to one might, some folks might say that might cut the process out a little bit too deep and maybe not give you the exposure and maybe the clarity that some would like.
Okay.
All right. So you haven't interviewed anyone yet?
But, so we will have.
I understand. What are the options that you're giving us?
Well, if the committee, you know, we're going to be face to face with the committee, and if the committee identifies, you know, a clear candidate, the question was, do we, do you just want us to bring that candidate forward and, or, you know, re-interview all that, that we interviewed, you know? You know, the process may, you know, yield that clear candidate, but that's fine. If we want to bring, bring him back in, that's okay with me. That was just a question. Expedite the process or?
I'm okay, yes, I'm okay.
You're okay with what?
Bring more than one forward, or bring one forward, but my, my opinion is, is that the consensus of council, if, if they want to see more than one, that's great. If they want to see just one, I'm confident with the way that the process is progressing.
Well, I mean, of course, we'd like to see more than one. I mean, what would be the point of interviewing one candidate? I mean, what, what would we do? How, how did you make a good choice when you presented one person and say, "Is this, is this okay?"
Well, it depends on how you look at the choice. I mean, you know, the committee's been charged with going through the, the screening and interviewing process and, and if the committee's done that and, you know, we're brought forth a recommendation, I mean, again, we, we guess, I'll go over once more the process is that the mayor brings forth a candidate for approval of the council. And what we've done so far is involved two council members in that process. So it was just, it was just a question with regard to moving forward.
Not meant to be, not to be a bone of contention.
Well, the ordinance, the ordinance says that the council shall interview the applicant. So as far as I'm concerned, you haven't applied to the ordinance anyway, but certainly whatever you have left.
Well, I mean, you didn't have your.
Well, that is, certainly, that is, that is how the ordinance reads. The council will interview applicants, so it would appear as though you violated the ordinance.
Well, it would appear not, so.
How, how do you say, how do you figure?
We haven't done yet.
Any other questions?
You interviewed them over the phone, you just said you did, so.
Right.
That is not the council, two people are not the council.
We have interviewed them in accordance with direction from the majority of the council. That's exactly what's occurred. Is there anything else?
You did not ask for us.
Is there anything else?
To present a committee to interview the applicant.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
You've signed those applicants, those committees.
Motion, Harrison, Second, Brockman, that we adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries.